Because after going over eleven pages.
Now, call the meeting to order for the Village South Amherst for November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, begin with the Lord's Prayer for those who choose to participate. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Amen. Pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Um. Jeffers, here. Casco?
Here.
Shari?
Here.
San Jacobo?
Here.
Here.
Troykey?
Here.
All present.
All right. An approval of the agenda for November tenth, two thousand twenty-five is sent down. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Casco?
Aye.
Ashari?
Aye.
San Jacobo?
Aye.
Seiski?
Aye.
Troykey?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And approval of minutes of October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five sent out. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept those?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Casco?
Aye.
Shari?
Aye.
San Jacobo?
Aye.
Seiski?
Aye.
Troykey?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, well, happy Monday, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. Any visitors that would like to speak, you have more than enough time to sign in, and if you've already signed in, you have three minutes to step up to the podium. If you'd like to speak your mind or have anything to say, you're more than welcome. Okay, all right. So just moving on, I have nothing under my report, Law Director.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving right along, Fiscal Officer. All right, thank you so much. Uh, and the records quick.
Okay, NOPEP Community Grant. All purchases must be completed by November twenty-fifth, and a copy of the receipts and/or purchase rep submitted to the records. The proper paperwork must be completed and submitted to Fiscal Officer for reimbursement. October seventeen report. Questions? Okay.
Lori?
Yes?
I have a question about your NOPEP Community Grant.
Yes.
We had already voted on that. Things that were going to be spent on for this year, is that right?
It has to be, okay. This one's different. This is the community grant, not the Energize Grant. The Energize Grant was what was used for the fire station lighting and things like that. This community grant is an automatic thousand dollars that we applied for and just received, but it all has to be used for a community event.
Okay, thank you.
So then, statement on Ohio Ethics applying to all public officials and employees. In accordance with the Ohio Ethics Law, Ohio Revised Code, Chapter one oh two and related statutes, all individuals serving in public roles, whether elected, appointed, compensated, or serving in a voluntary capacity, are considered public officials or employees, and are subject to the same ethical standards and legal obligations. This includes strict adherence to ordinances and the prohibition against using one's position to secure unwarranted privileges, exemptions, or treatment. For example, requesting a fee reduction or waiver from a paid staff member due to one's public role may constitute improper use of position and could violate the Ethics Law. Violations may result in enforcement actions by the Ohio Ethics Commission, including fines and other penalties. These consequences apply equally to all public servants, regardless of compensation status. Upholding these standards ensures fairness, transparency, and public trust in municipal operations. Land use plan. Um, from the meeting with commissioners and things, we were asked if we had a local use plan. Townships go through technically the whole land use plan. It is a plan that identifies what the desired land use is in the future. It's typical typically just lists general land uses like residential and commercial or industrial. It is often the basis for developing a zoning map which goes further and defines the type of each land use. For example, the agricultural residential and single-family residential districts are defined further than just saying residential. We did not create a land use plan. The zoning map in South Amherst fulfills that role per Asland Consulting. Um, after conferring with Rob Duncan, that the statement was accurate. Alls I had to do was submit our zoning plan, and I also sent along, just for kicks, is the strategic plan. So county has all. Um, Councilmember Ashari is going to speak about the conforming of boundaries and planization.
Okay, so, um, council knows the project that I was working on earlier this year to go and bind all the annexations for the village. There were sixteen of them. And got all the paperwork, all the ordinances, all the ordinances for the commissioners, and, uh, took it over to the engineer's office. We first got an estimate because we knew we had to annex fifteen point eight-three acres behind the cemetery. And we got two estimates, one was thirteen thousand and one was fourteen thousand. And that seemed like that was just gonna say, why would we bother to do this project? Because now we're talking about the whole village. And so, um, the engineer reached out and said, it, there might be a better way that we could do this. And it is by using the county's GIS map and like doing an overlay and the points and doing a legal description that way. And so, um, Lori included the estimate attached. The annexation went down to, I think it's three thousand dollars, and the conforming of the boundaries was thirteen thousand, so like a total of sixteen thousand. But that might not be the exact amount, but it's in the packet. So, the question is, do we want to conform our boundaries? And that would mean that we would no longer be in Amherst Township, and we would no longer be in New Russia Township. We would all be in the villages of South Amherst. They would have to create a new tax, uh, yeah, new tax ID like we're in oh-eight if you're on East Maine. They would have to create one solely for just the villages of South Amherst. Um, it would change the things at the voting. It gets reported to the state. There's a lot of steps that you have to go through. And, um, Michelle and I went and met with the, um, Auditor's Department and talked with them, and they came back and told us that, um, which this was the big surprise. I was really shocked. But they told us that yes, there, there was an X amount of dollars that we could receive in addition to the money that we get. But there is an ordinance seven oh nine point one nine that says you have to make them whole for twelve years at a declining ten per, or a declining percent, I have in my notes. So that means whatever amount that we would get by this change, for the next twelve years, we would have to give them a small portion back, but we would still receive revenue that we don't have. Um, but it would also change how people vote. I don't know how important it is to some people that they vote for Amherst Township trustees or New Russia Township trustees.
Gee, can you just give a little backstory of why we even decided to go and look into this? Why you decided to look into this?
Why we decided to look into it? Well, we just kept seeing that we were paying Amherst Township about twenty thousand a year, twenty-nine thousand a year in, uh, real estate taxes, of which they do absolutely nothing for us. Um, I even approached Neil Lynch and said, why don't you pony up and give us something? Pay the roads, you know, do the potholes for us, do something. And his remark to me was, well, why don't you just go get it changed? So, okay, I'll do that. I'll work on that. So, now New Russia Township, I haven't talked to, they, they really don't know anything about it, but theirs is a lot smaller. I think theirs was about seven thousand. So, do I know a hundred percent that residents might not be upset? So I'm suggesting that we have, uh, a couple of public hearings to share the information with residents, to let them know if you guys decide that we want to move forward with this. And, um, that's, that's kind of it. And then from Matt, we would also need to have an estimate of what your cost would be. Um, because you would be, from the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, but from the way I understand it, you would be the person to take the filing of the annexation over to the commissioners and do the filing and everything, get that annexed, and then once that was done, the, the second half of conforming the boundaries, the documents, that would have to get taken over. And I know that in the annexation, you have to notify probably the trustees, regular and certified mailer, something to that effect. I don't know the steps, and so this is where I'm kind of depending on legally to help us make sure that we do this right.
David?
So are you looking for a motion for us to do this?
Um, well, we, in previous, we've motioned that we were going to go forward with this. We also passed on the ordinance eighteen forty-three dash twenty-five on August the eleventh, um, authorizing the annexation. But I still would at least even like a motion that we move forward to the next step because it's for the money.
I make a motion that we move forward.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
For the public hearing.
For us, yeah.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call, please.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Casco?
Aye.
Shari?
Aye.
San Jacobo?
Aye.
Seiski?
Aye.
Troykey?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Anything else, Gee? All right, moving right along, Utility Minister?
Uh, just as a reminder to all residents, uh, I know leaves are dropping like crazy. Uh, we do not pick up leaves, so if you put them on your curb, uh, those will have to be removed, but we do have leaf bags in plentiful here at Town Hall. Come up, grab them. Um, there's no charge, just grab what you need. Um, so just like reminding residents that we do have them still available, uh, to come up and get free leaf bags. Um, for water, we had five shut-offs this month, uh, all back on. Uh, consumption report was presented to council. Any questions from council?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on the consumption report. Um, it looked pretty darn good.
Yeah.
With respect to the amount that is not accounted for was like thirty-five.
Thirty-six thousand, something.
And that could, that could be a matter of timing on them reading the meters and us reading the meters. So.
Yeah, it's within a few hours when.
Right.
Each other.
Right. And then, um, the amount that we paid, I believe, was ten thousand or close to thereabouts, and that's probably the lowest I've ever seen it.
Yeah.
So, something's working.
Something, something, what we're doing with the maintenance is, we're, we're just flushing the systems. It was just after a hydrant flush. Um, so we're kind of touching back on hydrant flushing as well. That's kind of my second information is, as we do these, we're going to start seeing less and less packing leaks because we're getting that debris removed from the mechanical joints of the, the system. So, um, as we continue the maintenance, hopefully we see our numbers keep being, keep on, uh, improving. So, uh, but although that is hydrant, uh, so the water department here, we're going to start coming out, um, probably every quarter with a new educational pamphlet that's going to be on our website for things that we do around the village. Uh, the first one that we're going to be coming out with, uh, probably here soon, is about hydrant flushing, why it's important, why we do it, what to expect when we do it. Um, just to kind of help the residents understand, you know, why we're opening up the hydrants. Yes, they're going to see discolored water. It is not unsafe. It's just the mineral deposits getting, um, stirred up. So we're going to be coming out with those probably once a quarter, um, and putting them on our website and getting them out to the public. Um, I did send that out to council, any questions on what we kind of put together? Uh, so we're going to be starting to do that more and more, um, just so residents are aware of when they see us out, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it's going to benefit them, um, and the, uh, quality of water that they're drinking.
Thank you.
Uh, and then park. No, 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 go ahead.
I was just going to ask you about, back to the leaf bag thing. So therefore, uh, when people put their leaves in a bag?
Republic will pick them up.
The public will pick them up. Do they put them in the trash can or will they just pick them up? Okay, so they will be picked up when they're set out?
Yeah, yeah. We just don't pick, we don't.
We don't.
We don't pick them up.
Got it.
Yeah. And if they put them out in big piles, we don't pick those up. So, yeah, we just wanted to let everybody know that they are available. We have tons of them.
Great.
Come get them. All right, um, so, talking with some employees and then kind of going through with the clerks and trying to come up with, uh, ways to advance revenue for projects at the park, um, I did some, uh, came up with a little bit of a pamphlet called Cans for Your, Cans for Our Park. Um, I don't know too much, we were trying to still figure out the, um, nuts and bolts of it, but what we're looking for through a community effort to keep, you know, our park, uh, as a community park, is turning in your aluminum cans to the service garage, which in turn, we will recycle. Um, and the monies collected from that will go back into the park for things like trash cans, uh, more signage, um, horseshoe pits, things to put back into, um, the community parks. I just wanted to kind of say this is something we're working on and see if there are any questions or comments from council about what, uh, we're trying to go for.
Michelle?
I'm just curious if you have a dollar amount that you're looking for.
Nope. Anything that we get, it just, whatever we can, it just helps, it takes relief, uh, stress off the general fund to repair, replace, make improvements.
I would think horseshoe pits wouldn't be that expensive.
They're not.
Sand.
They're not. Uh, but it's just things that, things like that that we can put back into the community, uh, park to make it more inviting to residents, kids, be safer, um, update things as we go along. Um, this is going to be an ongoing thing. It's not just between this month or this month. Um, pretty much, we're going to open our, our doors to receive and then just put the money right back into the park.
Great. Thanks. Yeah, um, I know you said you're still working on it. Have you thought of like how people can drop cans off, like if you're not there? Because I, I just want to, I can imagine people going, oh, their clothes are not there, and just tossing their bags of cans.
Well, actually.
In front of the gate, and then they blow away or something.
If they're in a bag, you can put them in front of the gate.
Okay.
During, during hours, we'll have a can dedicated to just use cans. But if you collect them, you put them in a bag, tie the bag up, put them in a designated spot, we'll have that. We will pick them up in the morning. Um, we're also going to probably work with the bars and, uh, businesses around town to see if they have any cans that they would like to donate. Um, just to kind of get that, you know, put back into the park for fun and, and improvements to our community park, so.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions for that? Okay. All right, moving on to department's, uh, fire run report.
What's, was that a two?
Oh, the, uh, the demographic that was there, and then that would be available to the public online, correct? In the packet? Is that available to the public online?
Um, I was going to summarize it for a minute.
That works, yeah, as long as it's in there, that's, that's fine. All right, and then, uh, police citations, uh, looks like, um, was it nine, five, nine, six? So a total of eighty, uh, through, uh, September fifth to, um, November sixth, we have a total of eighty speeding sixty-eight, right on red four, and failure to control one. So, uh, the reports were taken, uh, around Anis Road, East Main, Marroy, Quarry, and South Lake. Um, so, yeah, the police are very busy, obviously, especially with the roads getting a little slick these days, uh, but our great service department will make sure that that stays at bay, so, uh, just be safe out there as well. So, thank you so much for the police and the fire department for all the services you do. All right, moving on to committees, Community Economic Development. And we have Penny Becker here, the Chair of Community Economic Development, to give a report. Thank you, Penny.
So, it's a report kind of sort of towards the tree lighting ceremony. Um, I know that I've talked to the mayor about the date falling on the same day as Amherst and a couple of other towns um, that are surrounding our community, and I really wish that we could change that date. I feel like we should be competing with our community. We should be able to, um, kind of be able to experience all of it around us. I just feel like we'd have a better turnout, um, with our community if we do change the date for the tree lighting ceremony. Um, I have talked to the fire department. They're on board, whatever I'm on board with. Um, I have talked to the choir director. She has a couple of dates that are open besides that Friday. Um, unfortunately, she is not available the weekends of that, um, the fifth is, I believe, the date.
Yes.
The Friday.
Yes.
So, um, the choir is not available that Saturday or Sunday, but they are available that Tuesday, Thursday, or the following Friday. Um, I think the following Friday is too late. Um, and my thoughts were, if we can't have it on the weekend with fire, we can move it to the weekday. Um, so.
Tuesday, the second.
There's Tuesday the second, or there is Thursday the fourth. Um, I'm not opposed to any of the dates. I just want to, um, be able to have a date so I can confirm with people. Um, I have people on reserve, but I don't want to lose them. Um, and sometimes they're more free or dear for the week than they are on weekends. Um, so, that is something that I'm bringing up to council. And then like hopefully next year, we can plan it to be the weekend of Thanksgiving, like maybe that Saturday or Sunday, that kind of really starts the holiday season. Um, but I know that we're kind of crunched, so I would prefer it to be that week.
If you want to change it, Penny, that's up to you, I think.
Um, I heard that I had to get a vote from council.
Yes. Okay.
So, um, this was our next meeting to be able to talk about it, so.
Gee.
So, to, to give a specific date, can the choir be here on December the fourth?
Yes.
And can they be here on December the second?
Yes. Those are the two dates that they had free for the week because, again, I feel bad coming at her and having these, and then, and then it not working out. So, um, I asked her she had it already, and then I realized it was on Amherst. Um, which, again, I think is just a big conflict in general. And, um, she's offered the dates, the twelfth, the second, the fourth. Unfortunately, she's not available, the choir's not available on weekends. They do a lot of caroling on the weekends in December, um, so they plan it out ahead of time. Uh, and again, it didn't like really click to me until after Halloween, because the dates were, uh, same date.
Have you checked, uh, for other places on the second and fourth? I think so.
Nothing, on the fourth, people are going on, but, um, the weekend, that Friday and Saturday, it is, um, I believe, Overland, Vermilion, Amherst, and like Brown Hill, I think, is doing something there, can't recall. But they're doing it all the first week of December, on the fifth, fifth through the sixth. But again, I'm not opposed to any of it. I'm just like, if we want her to participate, uh, that sixth or seventh will not work.
I make a motion to move it to December fourth.
I'll second.
December fourth?
Discussion. No discussion, roll call, please.
Jeffers?
Aye.
Casco?
Aye.
Shari?
Aye.
San Jacobo?
Aye.
Seiski?
Aye.
Troykey?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, you want to put it this way?
Um, I was going to put six, because that's what it was before in the books. I feel like it's a little time to the families that work. Um, to be able to experience it as well.
All right.
Any help?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I have, we have a couple of things rolling. I don't know if we talked about, but we want to be able to have pictures of Santa, so we want to turn this into the North Pole. Um, I had Preston, which is a student from Fireland, he did our Halloween Fest pictures, uh, the South Amherst historical pictures for the car show, and he's already excited to do the pictures for Christmas. And then that's what I may want to partner up with. Tomorrow, I go over to the South Amherst to see what they, the fire department, to see, um, what they're going to contribute. And I know I've already talked to Jeremy about maybe opening his shop up to do like the activities to walk across the street. Um, but again, I need a date to like confirm things, to get things going. Um, so we're excited. I know I talked to Scott about maybe getting like rain years, so.
Oh, so you have that number, call. Um, the only other question that I have is, I think, I kind of know about this, I don't know if everybody else does, but there was discussion about not taking the fire trucks out, so the last two bays would not be used for the event. That we would use the training room, and then we would use council chambers and possibly the vestibule. So that's going to require people the next day to be up here to help to clean up, because you're going to be six o'clock to nine. You might put up a few things, but that's not really staff's responsibility to clean up.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, I think, I mean, I know Rob was there helping me clean up the Halloween Fest, so I'm pretty sure that we left it in decent standing. Um, and that's what I plan to do with anything that I put on to lead us away that has been left for me, for sure.
I'd be too appreciative.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would love little elves. Any little elves would like to help?
Help shoes.
I also, um, what else do we do then?
Oh.
Does anybody, like, have we tried the lights for the tree? Do we know they work? Do we know they're in good shape?
Which one?
We just put them up last year. We haven't tried them yet this year. We'll turn them on tomorrow, find out. We just put them up last year. We haven't tried them yet this year. We'll turn them on tomorrow, find out if they work well. If they don't, then Wednesday. Wednesday, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that too. And if I can take a peek to see what we have for Christmas props, like stuff that we have in the garage already.
Just let me know.
Um, I heard that we had a little Santa mailbox. I wasn't sure if that's, like, I don't remember seeing it at Halloween time, so if you just take a peek again.
It's all in the shed, just let me know.
Great.
You look up the giant tree that, that you got.
Didn't you get? I got a sleigh.
A sleigh, that's right.
Okay.
That's fun.
Yeah, it's.
It's aware.
Right there.
All right, well, awesome, good stuff. Well, thank you so much, Penny. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to ordinances, no objection by reading title only.
Ordnance number one eight four eight dash two five, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the village of South Amherst fiscal officer to prepare and/or accept blanket certificates and super blanket certificates with the fiscal care. Ordnance number one eight four nine dash two five, second reading, an ordinance adopting the village of South Amherst sales tax reimbursement policy. Ordnance number one eight five zero dash two five, second reading, an ordinance establishing updated fines, costs, and fees for mayor court. Resolution number seven six five dash two five, final reading, employment agreement with Matthew A. Mishak as law director from the village of South Amherst on January twenty twenty six to thirty one, December twenty twenty six, authorizing appointment of prosecutor and administrative assistant.
We make a motion that we pass resolution number seven six five dash two five.
Second.
Discussion.
Real quick, just for the benefit of people, if you describe what a blanket certificate and a super blanket certificate is, just ten seconds.
A blanket certificate is to any vendor for a one purpose, if you count my Halloween appropriations. A super blanket is for one over ten thousand dollars, which I've never done in eight years, I've been here.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? No discussion, roll call please.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Casco.
Aye.
Shari.
Aye.
San Jack.
Aye.
Siski.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution number seven seven zero dash two five, emergency reading, transfer, maintain funds in compliance with O R C D nine point three nine.
I make a motion that we pass resolution number seven seven zero dash two five.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call please.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Casco.
Aye.
Shari.
Aye.
San Jack.
Aye.
Siski.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Moving on to miscellaneous audio. Yes, sir.
Going back to having the public hearing, are we doing it before the end of the year?
I think we need to do it as soon as we can because there's a certain time that the filing has to be with the commissioners to get it to the state. So I would say.
Like all of them before the end of the year?
No, probably, probably one now and then one in January or.
Yeah. One in the middle of the day, right? Sure does. How long do we really think we need for a public hearing? How much should I?
That long?
So we could have it at six thirty before our December meeting.
The end of December?
It's the one meeting we have in December.
What's wrong with the twenty fourth?
Wednesday?
No.
November.
November.
Oh.
November?
Okay.
All right, November twenty fourth, six thirty, right?
Don't we have a public meeting that day?
Oh, maybe so.
We do. It's a six forty-five.
Oh, for, oh, for appropriations. Well, we can have it, we can have it on a six fifteen.
Yeah, six fifteen.
All good there? All right, miscellaneous.
Audio optimization. I have had a few people say to me, and I'm sure others have heard it, that they can't hear us when they watch the YouTube sessions. And yes, I know we can all remember to speak up, but we can't, we don't, and people don't hear it. And the whole purpose of us doing that is to share the information. So I am this much knowledge of technology. And I keep saying, why can't we have microphones that connect to something? And how much could it possibly cost? And I go online and I look and I see something for twenty bucks and I'm like, well, what's wrong with this? Yeah, so Scott's telling us quite a bit.
So what we did is the most portable option, what we did before was a conference mic that is plugged through a USB and a webcam. That was what started this whole shebang. This camera right here was about, I want to say around four, I think, hundred, along with this that came with it, which is a Bluetooth microphone that you can move around. And that's what I liked about it. It just had the, the mobilization aspect of it. So if we were able to put it somewhere where it could pick up on everybody, that would be the best case scenario. But if you're looking at like microphones, switchboards, all that stuff like that, it's not not impossible. It's just going to get very pricey because you also have to think about the person that's going to be switching. You know, if, if there's a, say, somebody speaking at the podium and then the microphone wants to get turned off. I looked into this in Amherst Township with their meetings. They have a nice setup there. It's just, it takes someone to do that motion, so.
So there's no simpler way to do it?
There's no simpler way. It's going to involve a lot of just different, I mean, like hardwiring, I guess, would be, because if you're going to plug in, what? Eight different microphones or, you know, up to twelve?
Well, is it one that you couldn't just pass around?
I mean, yeah, sure. It just, I know that we get a little, yeah.
That would be a pain to pass around, because you had everybody talking differently. But does that have an external input, that particular device?
Just a headphone jack.
I was just curious. You can buy Bluetooth transmitters, but like you said, you'd have to have a mixer in order to have all the ones up there in the preamp. But I mean, it could be done. It's just a little complicated.
Yeah, a lot of wires. But I mean, again, if, if I find something that's worth you guys talking about, then absolutely, I would want that for the village. If they can't make it here in person, we got to bring it to them in the TV or the computers, so.
Price wise, what kind of number are you talking?
It's going to be in the thousands.
Thousands, like two thousand?
Could be.
Okay, because, you know, if, if we're going to look at having something like this for next year, Michelle needs to.
Well, we're not planning anything one year in a year.
No, not before the, but you need to know for your budget for next year.
Oh, yeah, well, we can do permanent donations, temporarys are already done.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've got time, council and public.
Okay, so then what I can offer then is just going back to my drawing board of all the things that I've saved and I was going to send to you guys, but again, it was in the crazy pricey, you know, like I didn't want to send it, but if this is something that the village is worth investing in, that wants to bring a better product to the public, then I'd say that one's worth looking into. So I'll do my homework, send it out to you guys. You guys can discuss, look it over yourselves, and then we can talk about it again.
And or is it that, you know, the guy that does the sound of the cemetery for us? If we reached out to him and see what his solution would be?
Yeah, I mean, he does live sound. I don't know if he does anything recording wise, but you definitely can ask him first, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I have no problem being the person that sits here and controls a mic at, at the lecture.
No, no, I understand, but the problem is that it would be a disservice if somebody was speaking to one of us and we're also doing something else. It's the same thing if somebody was doing a switchboard over there. They can't manage doing what their job is as the, the minutes taker or just, you know, fiscal officer giving reports, whatever. We need to make sure we're giving the full bottom attention to the public. So that's, that's why I don't want to do that.
I get it.
He would just think it pushed to talk, you know, it would be the responsibility of a person speaking, like if I'm speaking now, I would do push to talk and then that would route the audio into the, you know, whatever we're going to use. So the only thing would be controlling the lecture and you don't want that to have to do that. That's just an idea.
But again, we could definitely look into it and I'll send out all the ideas and if you guys, David or yourself, Rob, if you know of anything, let, you know, I know you dabble in that as well, so feel free to throw something at the wall, see if it sticks. All right? Great.
Next one was, I think all of these are mine, communication ideas. I talked with David about putting some things out on the webpage for consumers to have a better understanding about water because there's definitely a vibe that this is terrible water, that our water passes all the tests that we have, that the EPA puts us through. So it's not terrible, terrible water. It's individual, maybe their houses or their plumbing or a particular incident that might happen that would cause bad water, but it's not bad. But I also thought about, wouldn't it be nice to be able to have a fireside chat on our village webpage? But I checked into it, it doesn't, we can't do it with the particular webpage program that we have. And then it's like, well, maybe a council member might want to make a presentation just like we did for YouTube, the same way we did for meet the council members.
I always do just a little, put it on our social media, not on the website, but on Facebook.
Right, but Facebook is such a, that's such a narrow group of people that doesn't service the whole village. So the intent would be to support the whole village. But it's just an idea to think about that if anybody wanted to say, hey, I want to do a presentation on this topic. You know, maybe we could even do one on conforming the boundaries and how that came about and why it never happened and what benefit it's going to be. But it's just an idea that we could possibly do that, or we want to make like a flyer as such as those two to put out.
Teeny, how, how would that work? Like, like what if you and I did a Q and A and I asked you questions and you answered them?
Can't be two council members.
They can't be two council member people. Right.
Then also just kind of wanted to put out there about water as well. I know it's not a great read, it's not fun, but we do have to put out our consumer confidence report every year. Ours is currently on our website. That tells you every single test, every single thing mandated by the EPA that we have done for the year and what the results were. So if you have questions, you can also look at that. I know it's not a fun read, but it is out there on our webpage of every single test that we have to go through to make sure our water is safe and drinkable to come, to get delivered to.
I mean, as far as communication, right now, we have the newsletter, we have YouTube, we have the website, we have Facebook, we have, what is it now called? What, not Code Red, right? Code Red, so we use the nine one one Lorraine County Services to send out messages. So I'd say we're doing a good job of communication, way better than, no offense to anybody, but, you know, than we have done in the past because it's more acceptable. Not that anybody hasn't tried, it's just, it's easier these days with technology. But I think putting that information out there is great. It's just people retaining that information. I mean, you could put, I mean, there's a lot of sayings, but I mean, you could put so much information in front of somebody and they'll say they don't even know anything about it. So again, it would just more or less being, if we're going to put all the effort into it, I want the retention to be there as well.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it was like a PowerPoint presentation, it could be in a library where they could always go back to. Or, and same thing with YouTube, it would be there.
Yeah, yeah, the library is there, absolutely. Yeah, I agree. Okay.
And the newsletter, Penny, did anybody get any pictures of the Halloween event that would not necessarily include children's faces?
Yeah, online had kids' faces in them.
Um, I want to say, yeah.
Okay, because the thought for the newsletter will be a year in review. So we'll go over all the things that we've accomplished or have plans to do in the future. And I started looking at pictures, but again, mine had children's faces in it and I don't think that it would be appropriate for us to put it up.
I kind of like think there's a lot of community engagement with the pictures, so, but I think there's a few.
Okay, yeah, we don't need a whole bunch, you know, just a couple would be good, okay.
For sure.
So if anybody has any ideas for articles for the newsletter, like I say, a year in review, write them up.
Anything else that you're looking forward to showing things from?
No, I mean, David's going to cover quite a bit because he's done cemetery, we have, we have pictures from the cemetery. Um, he's done three street projects.
Water project at the cemetery, you certainly said that, sorry.
And, you know, so even, even flushing the hydrants.
Wouldn't be wanted by.
Well, it's going to be for after January, but it takes us.
It takes a minute just because it's a tedious project, yes.
What's your deadline?
That's what you just, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're just saying.
So the biggest, the biggest thing is I put, you guys give me all the potatoes and I make the beef stew, but sometimes there's not enough potatoes for the stew. This time there will be and I can get it done faster. So it is a tedious project because I sit in front of my computer and I put it all together. So.
What do we see? Articles by the end of the year? So we can have it out by the end of January?
Sure.
Can I get it to you by? It's the week of January fifth, with the holidays.
Yeah, the holidays.
Yeah.
January fifth.
Be good.
And then the next one, mega site committee. I need clarification for myself personally. But I came up to the group meeting that was held by Jim Kalik. And it was posted on the village's website as a meeting. But there were three council members up here and so I didn't feel it was appropriate for us to talk because we really didn't know it was a public meeting. Nor is it a part of the village councils, committee meetings or groups like that. This was just, oh, he wants to have a group and his people are going to meet and that's okay. That means if there's two of us, we really can't contribute or comment on things or answer questions. Because it's not posted as a public meeting for everyone. He wants to keep a controlled group. So, but that also takes me to another thing is that I would like to make a motion that we waive the fee for allowing someone to use council chambers. There's an ordinance for that meeting in any future that they would hold here.
My second motion.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call please.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Casco.
Aye.
Shari.
Aye.
San Jack.
Aye.
Siski.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Anything else to report on the mega site committee, Jean?
That's all I have.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah. Are we going to do anything about this? I mean, I realize that it's not happening in our, in our village, except that the sewer line is in our village. I mean, are we going to do anything, get involved in this with other communities? At, at some point, there may be a lawsuit filed and should we talk to these other communities to see if we can all go together on one rather than?
Who's filing a lawsuit?
I don't know of anybody. It's just a possibility.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's, it's a big thing and it's going to affect us all. And I, I feel like we're just kind of turning a blind eye.
So council, they passed legislation, so it would be for you guys to discuss and that's why I suggested to Jim to put a committee together with like-minded people that don't want this site to happen. And we open the doors for council to have it here. If they don't want to have it here, that's fine, that's no worries. But I thought that that'd be a better way to push this idea out, obviously that things are happening. A lot of people actually still don't know. That's affecting them. So I would just say that whatever council wants to move forward with, that would probably be your best bet. But I mean, when you say, what are we going to do about it? I mean, what do you think?
I think we need to have more discussions on it. The discussion we had at the fire station I thought was interesting, except it was cut short. I mean, I had questions I wanted to ask Dave Moore, but we, you know, it, it sort of ended too quickly. I mean, he said a few things that I didn't, I don't think were complete. And I would like to pursue that. And I think a lot of other people would like to pursue that. I thought that was a step in the right direction to invite area residents in. And I'd like to see something like that happen again.
Absolutely. Well, Jean, you're actually a councilwoman, Jean, she reached out to the commissioner herself, so I mean, I think anybody could do that the same. Yes.
And I think after that last meeting, there's not going to be a whole lot of people that are going to want to come to this meeting. I reached out to Christine Nelson from Team NEO. She was, she said in a News Channel five interview that she was going to work, this is like early October, late September. She said she was going to come out and talk to leaders and neighborhoods. So I invited her to one of our council meetings and I got crickets. So I'm pretty much thinking that this meeting that they saw today more, nobody's going to come in. Would you want to go and?
Would you want to go in front of 185 people that are not happy with you?
I think it would be my responsibility if, if, as Dave Moore, it's, they're the ones doing it, they should come. It's different between being responsible and actually doing it as far as the people that are doing it. That's the bad part.
A lot of people stood up and made statements, they didn't ask questions. When you asked at the end, Scott, if anybody had any questions, the only person that spoke up was Aaron. And he had questions about why he wasn't moved in, because how would it affect the fire department? Well, it's going to be involved mutually, so.
One thing I can just say is that as the mayor of Southambers, all I can do is be there at the day that it happens, that we can either prevent something like this from happening. You say prevent, I say if we can be at the forefront of it, obviously, that they say, seat at the tables, what everybody's saying. If we can do that, I think we're doing our job. But for us to go out and say, I object this, that doesn't do anything. That's just me talking, that does nothing. So the action is you either build this, you reach out to Commissioner Moore, like Jeanie did, and say, we want to invite you back for another town hall meeting out at the fire station, so we can rally the troops and get them back out here to get more information. I'd welcome that with open arms. But to say, let's just do something without having anything behind it, doesn't really carry any weight. So I'm always open to suggestions, I'm always open to try to do something. But no one's given me anything but saying, what do you feel? How do you oppose this? You know, like, I'm not going to say, I don't know, you know, I object, and then what? What do I do then? There's got to be action.
Yeah, I'm not saying we object to it, point about it. I'm saying I still need more information. And we're not getting it.
Absolutely, I agree.
There were questions, the, the big question I had, and I still have, is you mean to tell me that we're putting in this giant sewer line and you folks in the county have no idea what's going to go at the beginning of it? I mean, come on.
I don't think it's a sewer line, they'll make it's a forced line.
Okay, we'll keep on this, okay, excuse me, it's a forced line. It's a forced sewer line, okay? So anyway, that's, that's my point, that it seems to me it's disingenuous for them to say, we're going to have this forced sewer line, but we have no idea what it's going to go into. And it seems crazy for me to put in this, I don't know how much it's going to cost, line without knowing who's on that end. So I'm sure they know, and I would, I would like to know that.
David, can you touch on this at all with as far as, go ahead, Jean.
Okay, so this will be maybe a question that Matt can confirm. But the forced line that they're talking about going down Russia Road, which is in our village, would you think, because it's South Amherst, that we should be able to do something about it? And, and I think residents seem to think we can say, no, we're not going to let you put that forced line in. But I believe in the revised code, that it says if it's in the right of way, that's a utility that will go in. It has to meet certain specs, it has to be 10 foot away from the water line. It could be on either side, up or down. It doesn't mean just on the side of it. And the only thing that we could do when we sign the agreement with them to put this in is to say you have to restore the road if you tear it up, you have to fix the residence property if you tear it up. And that's the extent of it, that I know of. Matt, is there anything that we can do to say, no, we don't want that line in?
I would suggest that if council wants to discuss this matter, I mean, Councilman Say Jack Mowbray brought up potential litigation, that we would discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
Do we feel that's needed? Does anybody want to do that? Mike?
I'd like to do it, sure.
Okay, make a motion.
Make a motion that we go into executive session and talk about this for you. I'm sorry.
Just for issues with potential litigation.
For issues of potential litigation.
And second, okay. Roll call please.
Jeffers.
Aye.
Casco.
Aye.
Shari.
Aye.